The Brown Act requires that they be able to see our faces. And it's not going, now we have to do this.
There we go. Oh, we got it. Sorry, it all crashed at three. We had a crash at three, so.
Good afternoon, welcome to the June 12 special meeting presentation by Metro Harnish.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Foundation under God and invisible, looking to be the just as a girl.
I think we're turning it over. I don't know. I think what we did at the door was we read the formal agenda item. Kind of like we could do for a normal hearing and then turn it over to the consultants. Last two days.
We didn't get a paper copy of the agenda.
During public comment period, members of the holding address on commission on any matter of not this on the agenda. That is then the subject under jurisdiction of the common commission. We made public comment in the room. Any public comments from you?
Any from you? We're checking. There are no hands. No.
Want to close public comments? See with the ring or calendar. May is community development on in doing co-special study session.
Metro Harnish? Okay, we can pull up the PowerPoint. Well, good afternoon, Commission. We still getting that feedback? You can hear it echoing. Try that. Test. Test. Test.
Please bear with us. We're working through some technical difficulties. Test.
Actually sounds more amplified now.
Test.
Powerman barn. And I'm not sure if we're going to be able to work that into the camp. But definitely planted a seed of. Down the ranch is right next to the cemetery. And so.
I know. I thought about bringing him just to introduce him to Rory.
Test.
His nickname's Billy.
Use it. You made it. Brody. Do you want to be done with this batter?
John, we can hear you.
What time? Make some sort of pastry or something. Yeah, it is. It's exactly how it works.
This wife is on his brief show.
Oh, they're buried next to there. There should be a way where he can pin us to be that box.
There's a bunch.
Yeah, we used to have them.
Do we need Suzie?
I think we got it now. Clerk of the Board is the Zoom account that we're on. Okay, so then we can turn the.
We need to change the host.
Yeah, how did you guys log in?
Zach logged us on.
So you have to log in through. Well, I don't know how to log in through.
That'd be great.
We think that five minutes recess to address our technical folks, please.
Thank you.
I don't know if they heard that on Zoom. I think we're giving it implied, but.
Call Suzie.
Yeah, we may need a pause, so.
Yeah, talk to.
This meeting is run through the clerk of the board Zoom account. Not sure what they're talking about.
Because they're supposed to be the host and we're, this is supposed to be the co-host.
Board chambers is co-host.
Well, it should be because, yeah.
Clerk of the Board owes me. Board chambers. The video's on.
So who had said the board favor is a co-host? And then Trinity County of the clerk is the host. Which is says that.
Slideshow on.
I don't know.
Right, no, but then that won't, the gallery won't be able to see that.
That's being projected through to, maybe we're not supposed to be using HDMI?
Well, Debbie said that they were going to plug in a laptop there, so this laptop would be showing them on it. Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Can we split screen? Because they want to show this, but also the presentation. And we did not, we need to stop recording.
Stop sharing?
But we also.
And then you start sharing back and forth?
Because.
And then that shows them and then every time you have to go back and share again.
Okay, I can do that.
I think that's how it's done.
Okay.
That's the only way I can.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, so assuming that the audio works, then I.
Let's test out the audio.
Testing. Okay, then.
Raise their hand.
Where's the Zoom that you can see if they're going to be raising their hand? And then just up there. Zoom, can you raise your hand if you can hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Thanks, John. John, can you talk again so we can see if we have surround sound with your voice?
Testing. One, two, three, testing. One, two, three, testing.
He's just coming out of a laptop. Maybe he's saying with a microphone.
So then I think we'll get crazy.
Zoom is coming out of a laptop and it's not coming to it. So we'll help with that. And then when we need, will we start with that?
Can you talk again so we could hear your voice?
Now it's echoing.
One more time?
Oh, sorry, I wasn't near the phone. Did you want me to speak again for audio testing?
That works. Thank you.
You're now the host.
Now, over here. And it wasn't plugged in.
Yep.
Okay.
Can someone from Zoom talk so we could see, check the audio?
Testing. One, two, three. Testing.
Okay, thank you.
So when he's doing the slide. And they. Had it. Remember they had the.
Yeah.
Slides and the board was on there.
I know.
Well, we don't want John Brower up in the corner.
There we go. Fortunately, we can't. That's fine.
That's success, Suzie. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Lost on good.
Oh, we are? Okay. Sorry, I didn't realize. Am I? Shouldn't it go find something?
I think I'd want to go find them.
And the recording's still on.
I assume you did join us, Commissioner McIntosh.
I believe we have addressed all technical difficulties. I hope. Metro Harnish, if you would please continue. Thank you. Okay, so let's pick up on the ongoing project process. So what's shown here on the screen. For those of you who are familiar with the general plan update. This is the overall project process for the entire, entire project that the county is currently undergoing. So this includes the general plan, the zoning ordinance, community plans, as well as the housing element. So this project initiated back in 2021, the green bubbles, which is phases one through four. Those are complete. They have checkpoints. We're currently in the blue bubbles that have the red star, so we're wrapping up the community plans. The county's housing element was conditionally approved by HCD and is moving forward for final adoption in the coming months. We are working through the public review draft of the general plan. We had two, a two-day study session with the commission and board of Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. And then we're currently working on the zoning ordinance update. Following this, we will start to prepare the EIR. That should occur later this summer, early fall. The EIR is required for every project in the state of California. It analyzes any impacts that may arise from a project and then provides mitigation to limit those impacts. And then what we all hope for is number nine. That's the last one. That is the adoption of all the components of the plan that is currently scheduled. It says summer 2026, but it's probably going to be more toward early fall. Following the adoption of the plan, any rezones that have to occur as part of this process, which there will be some, specifically unclassified parcels were recognized by the board for rezoning as part of this effort. Those rezones have to occur within two years of adoption, and that is a state requirement. Excellent. So if you've been part of our meetings, this graphic should look very familiar. This shows what, what is the, what is the baseline of this project, which is the general plan. Think of the general plan as the foundation. It's the blueprint for the county. General plans are long-term. They're comprehensive. They look up 20 to 25 years. What's important to note is as you work up the pyramid, those items get more specific and they actually implement the general plan. So the zoning code implements the policy as part of the general plan and your zoning includes all of your development standards, performance standards, administrative requirements, permit requirements, and so forth. That's where we're at now. And so this zoning ordinance that's in front of you today in its first draft form is part of that second piece. Above that, we have subdivision maps. That comes from zoning. That's the subdivision of land into track maps, parcel maps. And then from there, you have your building permits. That's the top of the pyramid. That's where most of the community members deal with planning is when they come to the building or planning counter to open a new business or to do modifications to their property or to establish a new use. Next slide. So the process of updating the zoning ordinance, here's another bubble chart, one through nine. So right now, we are in bubble number one. We've completed this. This is the preparation of parts three, five, and six. And that's what's part of your agenda packet today. Bubble two, this is our planning commission meeting. Over here, we're going to take the first look at this draft. I'm going to emphasize that word draft. This is not a formal public review draft. This is the first time that we're daylighting these three parts to the planning commission. And once we receive feedback from the planning commission, we will revise that draft and that'll become part of the formal public review draft that'll be released later this year. We're currently preparing step three right now, which is parts two, four, and seven, and I'll get into what those parts are. There will be a subsequent planning commission meeting just like this on those additional three parts. Following that, we'll release a public review draft. There'll be community workshops. At this point, we're tentatively scheduled to have two. This is the same as it was last year. For those who attended, there was a workshop in Weaverville on the zoning ordinance update and then one in Hayfork. SEGA evaluation will occur following that. It'll get tied back to the general plan. So the EIR is covering both aspects of the project. A revised public review draft zoning ordinance will come into play after that and then adoption. Next summer and fall. That aligns with the general plan. So so far, we've completed engagement as part of this, which is on the next slide. And this engagement has just been zoning specific. So there's been a series of stakeholder interviews that we've completed. Stakeholders were selected at the discretion of the county. We asked them, what are the pitfalls of the zoning ordinance? How does a zoning ordinance work for you? Do you think it could be better formatted, better presented, clarified? And that actually helped us in the beginning of the process evaluate your current zoning ordinance and where modifications could work by those who who use the code on a daily basis. We had the two zoning ordinance workshops. Some of the images there are from Hayfork and Weaverville. And as the planning commission may remember, we held a zoning ordinance seminar with the planning commission and the board and walked through. Both Martha and I walked through, why do we do zoning? How is it important? And how is it implemented in California as well as state laws that affect zoning ordinance? Next slide. So I talked about parts when we're looking at the, the project process. And this is the organization that's being proposed for the zoning ordinance update. And it's breaking the zoning regulations to a series of seven parts. The first part focuses on purpose, applicability, interpretation. What's the purpose of the zoning ordinance? How is it applied countywide? How is it applied to community plans in this case, which is pertinent to this project? And then the different interpretation requirements. How does a zoning district interact with a land use designation in a general plan and what trumps what? So this is important. This is, think of this as the introductory provisions to your zoning ordinance. Part two, this is what most people think of. This is your allowable uses, permit requirements, and development standards. What can I do in my zone? What business can I operate? And does it require a permit? That is ministerial, which means one that's approved at the planning counter? Or does it require a use discretion, which goes to the planning commission to all of you? Part three, that's our general development standards. Those apply countywide. So that would be how is height measured? Parking spaces, landscaping, fences, walls, signs. Doesn't matter what zone you're in, those standards will apply across the board. Part four is your standards for specific uses. So there may be specific uses in your zoning ordinance that need a specific set of standards for approval. A great example would be accessory dwelling units. ADUs have their own sets of standards, so uses that need those specific standards will be part of part four. Part five is permit processing. This is all the different permit types, an explanation of who reviews, who's the review authority? How those processes work? How do you file that application? Are there findings for conditions of approval required? We'll get into that. Part six is zoning code administration, the appeals process, the enforcement process. This is mainly handled on the backend by your county staff. And then part seven, definitions. This part, I would say, is critical. Every jurisdiction has its own unique definitions for terms and for practices, and this is where all of those terms get dropped in. If you were part of the last two days of workshops, you would have noticed there were certain terms like small-scale agriculture. It needs a local definition. That's where those would land in part seven. So for today, we're going to focus on part three, part five, and part six. Part two, four, and seven, that'll come for the next meeting, which will be later this summer. Next slide. Next one. So let's talk about draft part three. Now, the way we have this structured is we'll go through each of the parts and then we'll stop for questions. And if there's any discussion items. So the purpose of a part three is it presents overall development standards that apply countywide regardless of the specific zoning district in which your property or parcel is located. Excellent. So what's included in the draft part three that is before you this afternoon? It includes general site and development standards. It includes general site and development standards. Measure height on a structure? Is it from the lowest point of the ground? What happens if you're on a slope? How do you measure height? Focuses on performance standards, noise, lighting, odor. How is that regulated and how is that enforced? Focuses on fences and walls. What type of fences are allowed? What's the height? At what point would it require a building permit based on height? And are there prohibited styles of fencing that are not allowed within the community or within the county? The landscaping provisions. For a county, this is a little different than a city. City requirements usually get into the specifics of street trees. You shall have, you know, one 15-gallon tree in your front yard. Obviously, a rural county is very different. So most jurisdictions just align with the state standards for your model water efficient landscape ordinance. And we'll get in, into that for, for this project. Parking and loading, that's all of your parking standards. How, how large are the stalls? How many parking spaces are required for specific uses? Loading standards, so forth. Signs. This obviously touches on sign regulations, the types of signs that are allowed and what you can and cannot regulate as, as it relates to signs, which is very specific. And then there's a utility section, which is unique to Trinity County. So what's changed from your existing zoning ordinance? So we maintained and updated general development standards as they pertain to height measurement setbacks and overall regulations as, as they pertain to parcel coverage. All of these standards that are before you today, county staff did go through a thorough review, multiple departments. Ward Smith modified the language and we just cleaned it up for clarity primarily. There are new sections for the county's consideration, including fences and walls. That was not covered previously. It's a pretty standard section to have in a part three of a zoning ordinance. And we tailored and modified it to fit the rural nature of the county. Also landscaping was another new section that we coordinated with your county staff on to make sure that it fit the specific, unique locale of Trinity County. As part of the update, we did reevaluate the parking regulations and added new sections to align with current best practices. So loading standards, where can a truck load? How long can it stay? We did look at the different parking requirements and modified where necessary. I think what's important to point out here is when we evaluated the parking, it needs to be a recognition that Trinity County is not a highly urbanized area. So in most urbanized areas, they're looking at trimming parking back or relying more on compact spaces, which is not applicable here. So how do we tailor the standards to fit the community members that reside here? And that's what we took part in when we evaluated the parking regulations. We also updated the utility section mainly just for consistency in formatting specifics with the other chapters located within, within your part three. Within the overall part three, we did do a reorganization where we applied a new purpose statement, an applicability statement to each section. And that is just for consistency throughout the entire zoning ordinance. So once other parts come before you for review, you'll start to notice that those new formatting principles are put into place. County staff did bless those formatting principles all the way up to the CAO. So with your general site and development standards section, we provided consistent language to each section for the formatting purposes. What you don't want is you don't want a code that looks like 12 people wrote it in 12 different voices. So as part of this, we did have a style guide that the county approved that we worked through and then instituted that style guide throughout this section. We also modified how height should be measured based on existing topography of the parcel. This is before the grading for a proposed site onsite improvements would occur. And this was at the recommendation of county staff through their review. We also cleaned up the language for ease of use as it pertains to performance standards. So your existing performance standards that covered noise and glare and light and odor were pretty vague. They needed to be buttoned down a little bit, so vague, I'm not sure how they would fully be applied. And so working with the county staff on that, we wanted to make sure that that was cleaned up. So if a project applicant came before the planning commission, it was, it was clear on the direction and intent of those regulations and then where enforcement would take place. Next slide. As it relates to fences and walls, we did clarify the maximum allowed fence height that could be achieved without triggering a building permit. I believe we raised that up to eight feet. Anything over eight feet would require a building permit. That's because at that point, it's seen as a structure, not necessarily a fence. And it would require additional bracing so as not to topple over. Providing standards for separation of uses. This is looking at, let's say you have a commercial property that is adjacent to residential. How do you separate those uses? Most of the time, you require a solid wall or fence to be put in. So you lessen the impacts between incompatible uses. So we provided some standards for that as well. Again, cleaned up the language as it pertains to the additional performance standards that have to do with incompatible uses. And then provided a new section on allowable fencing materials. And then what other fencing materials are prohibited? And it's not an uncommon standard to find in a zoning ordinance. Some communities allow chain link, others don't. Some allow razor wire on the top, others don't. So you start to see where zoning can get very specific and provide direction on the types of development you'd like to see within the county. Excellent. For the landscaping requirements, as I'd mentioned, for a rural county, it's not very common to get too far into the weeds, no pun intended, on landscaping. You have natural landscaping around you and this is not a highly urbanized area. So as part of the landscaping provisions, the state already sets a standard through their model water efficient landscape ordinance, otherwise known as the MUELO, which every jurisdiction has to comply with. And at the direction of county staff, what we did is we made sure that we cross-referenced that to the state mandated regulations so that any landscaping that goes in at a basement level has to comply with state regulations. And then clarified where some additional landscaping provisions would apply and would not apply in this case. For your parking, yes?
Are you going to walk through these in detail, the, the actual changes, the language at some point?
This was mainly an overview. I can pull up, I can pull up the draft that was located within your packet. And I can answer specific questions if commissioners have specific questions on, on certain sections.
Okay. I'll, I'll wait then.
My plan is when we get through the draft section, I talk about these themes. I'll hand it back to the chair to then facilitate discussion amongst commissioners. For the parking and loading standards, we did reflect best planning practices, again, but tailored to the county. Just because it's a best planning practice doesn't mean that it fits within a rural nature like, like Trinity County. We clarified that parking shall be evaluate, reevaluated if a use is expanded, but also realizing that there needs to be exceptions. Sometimes if you have a use on a parcel that expands and they require 30 more parking spaces, but the property is already built out and you can't expand the parking, how do we handle such issues like that? We also expanded the definitions on how to calculate the number of parking spaces. Specifically, if you start to get into fractional spaces, half a space, a quarter of space, how does that work? Also, we streamlined the number of required spaces with the recognition of the rural nature of the county. That's evaluating how many parking spaces per use. And then this is important to cross-reference the ADA and electric, electric vehicle government code requirements. No need to expand on those. They're highly regulatory as they are through the state of California. So we cross-referenced to, to what the state mandates for them. We also provided new location and design standard requirements for parking. This is mainly looking at where parking can go on your site, how it's placed, how the access points are. And then what are the surface requirements? We added a new section on loading spaces. Delivery truck pulls up or a business is, is getting a, a, a delivery of goods. Where do those loading areas occur? How long can a vehicle stay there? So forth. We also provided parking space dimension and drive aisle standards. Those are consistent with county practices. They're just codified here within the parking section. And then we provided an updated parking reduction section that would require some sort of director or potential discretionary review depending on the action required. For the sign section, we worked with your county staff to determine if a sign permit type is necessary for specific signs. We also made sure that there is a new section that focuses on exempt signs. And this aligns with state and federal law. So when we're talking about political signage, real estate signs, there are limitations. The county can on limiting those types of signage throughout, throughout the jurisdiction. We included a new section on prohibited sign types. This is not an uncommon addition to have. It's, it's illegal to have signs that mimic traffic or governmental signs if it's not one. And so we provided those regulations within here. Other prohibited sign types could include ones that flash, blink, move. I bet you can imagine the type of signs you've seen neither in the county or in surrounding jurisdictions. So we took a stab at providing some regulations on that. We also updated the standards on how to measure signs. How do you measure a single face, a double face, or a multi-face sign? Lots of different ways to calculate that. We also wanted to make sure that the updated sign ordinance did not trample on the First Amendment rights, free speech. You cannot regulate content of a sign called content neutrality. That's a big no-no. There is a Supreme Court case about this. So at a base level minimum, we want to make sure that the sign regulations are fully and legally compliant. And then as I noted, there's the utility section. No major changes to this. The only portions that were changed was just language consistency between the sections. So the formatting was correct. This section went through rigorous staff review. Okay. So that's my overview of the general development standards are before you. Again, I do want to echo that this is not a public review draft. This is not a complete document in the sense that it's ready for hearings or anything like this. This is the first time that we're daylighting draft standards. We will be bringing this back out in the public review draft form. It will receive public comment and so forth. Available for any questions on this part.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. Commissioner Harper, do you have something you'd like to discuss?
Ah, yes. So when you talk about rural and you call Weaverville rural, I call Weaverville urban if you compare it to where I live. So all these rules, I mean, other rules in the building, everything in the zoning is good for Weaverville, Hayfork, you know, actual cities, towns. They kind of leave us hanging in a rural area. So when you're completely off-grid, say you're on 600 acres and you have to comply to everything that you're putting in here, it doesn't work. I just, I mean, it's not, it's not cost-effective. It's not, in my opinion, required. If you receive no city services, no PG&E, no nothing, what, what are you permitting for? So my question is to be able to put in some kind of a, an opt-out or an option in zoning for someone who's off-grid and is not affected by, that doesn't affect anybody in a town, a city, or community to avoid all this stuff. Because basically, if you, if you're out in the middle of nowhere, what, the hoops you have to jump through to build a home on a, on a rural piece of property is enough that most people just avoid it and skip it and just go and, and build anyways. So I mean, is there an option we can put in? Even, even if you had to go to the board for a variance and prove that you could, you know, all, all the measures as far as that you can't, your house is not going to fall over on your neighbors because you're far enough away from them or... I don't know. I'm, I'm trying to figure this out. I don't really know where this applies, but I know that we're beginning the process of something that makes it really hard on true rural homesteads.
Do you have an example of something that is of specific concern? So I could better answer your question because the question you have is, is very, is very vague. An exception from not having to follow zoning standards? I personally have not heard of that. And so I, I, what I'm, I would just like to better understand where you're coming from so we can answer that.
So maybe an example would be swimming pools. I think swimming pools have to be in your backyard. But if you have 40 acres, 50 acres, who cares where your swimming pool is? So something like that?
Yes, yes, exactly. I mean, we can, we can have provisions based on parcel size and location of where, of where accessories like that could be placed on a parcel. But if you're talking about home construction, I mean, it would require a building permit right off the bat. Setback requirements could vary. I would, I would be interested to see what the zoning is on the specific parcels that, that, that you're concerned with, at least from, from that perspective.
Well, like the entire area out there, I, I think there's probably three permitted homes, maybe four in the entire thing out of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds. So what I'm getting at is, I mean, there's no gain for me to come here and pay the county for a permit when I don't receive city water, sewer, I don't receive PG&E, I'm on my own to handle everything. So why should I come jump through all your hoops and pay you money to receive nothing but a hindrance on building?
I mean, that's something that, that's something that I cannot answer for you.
Okay. That's why I'm trying to put it here to, to maybe see if we could, if I could direct staff or have, have direct staff directed to see what options would be for something like this, maybe.
Well, and I'm just going to guess, but I think maybe the reasons why people didn't get permits for the houses is there could be a number of regulatory hoops they go through, which aren't always related to zoning. So water and septic, fire safe, building construction, those regulations are separate than the zoning. So I'm imagining a house on a rural property and 600 acres. I don't know how much the zoning would limit that. If a house is a, a permitted use, the setbacks, I'm guessing are maybe, required setbacks are maybe 30 feet from the property line. The height limit is maybe 35 feet. I'm imagining that the house complies with the zoning. If it's not, there are some provisions for flexibility for zoning standards or building code requirements or other requirements. That's kind of a, a different thing and that would be a different process in a different department.
Okay. Well, it's coming up. So this, and this directly relates to it, I believe. So I, prime example is Skozmouth and on Stewart Ranch, they built a house three years ago. And they had their plans drawn up. And by the time they got done paying county fees and everything, they actually had to downsize the house because they couldn't afford it. And you're talking nothing from the county. I mean, we don't get, there's no city, no wa, no water, no sewer, no power. Our roads are a shambles. We have minimal school. I mean, what do we get for... And it just seems like a hindrance. I mean, every, I don't know. I mean, yeah, there's safety, there's safety issues, but the only real gain you get from a permit is that your building is worth more for resale. If you're not concerned about resale, if you're not open to the public, what is the point of all? You know, I mean, I, I just want to make it possible to, to have a rural homestead and not spend months in Weaverville and, and $20,000 to $30,000 for some, and not receive anything for it other than a stamp going, yeah, it's great. You know, a, a contractor's wiring job is not guaranteed to not burn the house down. See, I mean, you can't go that, there's, I don't know. Most of those people don't care anyways.
Sure.
And even if we had to sign off, like, like if the fire department had to sign off and say, yes, it's safe or, you know, anything like that, as far, that's what I was saying about maybe a process to where you could get a variance. To where if you could come to the, if you come to the planning commission or to the staff and say, this is what I'm going to do and I don't need or want any of this. And I can prove that I have fire mitigation in, in place and I have water in place and I have a septic tank. And if I can just prove that I can handle all my own stuff, why do I need all this help from the county? That is, costs $20,000 to $30,000. That's, that's all I was trying to figure out. If there's a way that we can put something like that in there to help people that don't want to, I don't know, don't want to deal with big city LA's type crap.
So if, hey, Commissioner Harper, I'll give you a couple responses from, from my perspective. In terms of, you know, kind of the concern that you're not getting any services from the county, those services that are provided by the county come from property tax revenue mostly. So the building permit structure is a fee that covers the cost of the building department to process the building permit. And that's all really outside of zoning. Zoning determines what the uses are and the standards for that. But it's really state law from the concept of public health and safety where, you know, at least as I understand it, where the requirement to, you know, have building permits comes from. So currently, I think some of the options that exist for rural property owners are to pursue the limited density rural dwelling building permit type, which has a lower standard than a standard, you know, dwelling permit. So if any of that kind of helps, I mean, I follow what you're saying, but that's far outside of zoning. Zoning just sets the standards. It doesn't, it's not in zoning code particularly that the permits are required per se.
Okay, so zoning has no enforcement over whatsoever? I mean, that has nothing to do with it?
Well, zoning sets... Well, zoning sets the standard, but the enforcement for buildings is done by the building division as is currently established.
And a homeowner with pitchforks and shovels? I mean, that's, that's, that's what you're pushing against is, is rural people that don't want to, don't want to deal with this.
And
And lots of them.
I think we probably all follow, um, what you're communicating. Unfortunately, I don't think zoning code is the place to grapple with that, but...
So where would that be?
That's a great question for you to ask the C A O., I guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harper. Any other questions, discussion?
Yeah. So, you know, I, I'm looking at the current zoning, which is, uh, 1730, and I see that you are replacing it with additional sections, 1740, 1755, kind of the new sections. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, there is a new form of organization, um, and there are new sections being added. Some, some sections are moving numbers too, as well.
Okay, and so I can see the new sections, but what I can't figure out is where you edited or changed the current sections? And so is there a way to, to figure that out where you've, you know, corrected the current sections?
The, so the, the way that we've worked this with county staff is that we have sourced, we have basically sourced every line item in there to, to show where exactly that existing provision came from, if it was moved, relocated, or renumbered. If it's new, it's noted as new. Um, any standard that went through a modification, um, as part of that source tag, it just says modified for it. So when you're looking within, for example, Part Three, if I'm looking on page, let's see. Well, I don't know what page it is in your packet, but in the encroachment section, the encroachment introduction has a new source listed. The encroachment requirements under that, the source is your existing 1730060D modified. So that, that existing item was carried forward. It may have had some formatting or technical wording issues to align it with the new consistency, and that's typically what the modified means.
Okay, I, I see where it says new or modified. I just don't know what modification was made, I guess, is my point. Okay, so I don't want to, I get that. Um, I just have to put them side by side and figure that out. So I have a couple of specific questions.
Sure.
Um, for the landscaping section, you have aligned it with the model watering, water code. I mean, have you aligned it with some of the new fire safety requirements, like the non-combustible zone five feet from a house?
No, typically, I mean, typically what we is, we wouldn't pull all of those standards in. We could refer out to those standards. But we wouldn't, we wouldn't pull in the, if there's any fire code-related requirements as it relates to landscaping or, or, or additional setbacks for buffering for, for, um, safety purposes, it wouldn't necessarily fall within the landscaping. We wouldn't drop all of those standards in. We would refer out to those standards. That's how we would typically organize a code of this size.
Uh, I would suggest that you do that because, you know, Governor Newsom's new executive order is directing Cal Fire to create some of those standards. And so, you know, right now, we deal with, people put all these landscape plants right around the perimeter of their home. I mean, and that's going to be not allowed in the future for fire safety. And I think it's important in a rural area that people, you know, putting in new homes, don't plant juniper bushes right at their front door.
And Cal Fire is creating those standards as part of an, as part of an approval or an enforcement?
An executive order by the governor.
But Cal Fire will have that as part of an application when a project comes in, I'm assuming?
No, I don't think it's part of their 4290 that they would do that, so...
So that's all confirmed and established in, in Title 15 under building? And so some of the ordinances that Cody brought to you in the last month or two with updates include some of those state updates for, um, fire as it relates to building standards.
So can you cross-reference it then in this document so people know?
So what we can do is we can add a provision in here that cross-references those fire separation requirements as it regards to landscaping and, um, refer those out to Title 15.
So we had also discussed that there were concerns with, we discussed this with previous planners from the county, that we had concerns about differences, or discrepancies between the Manuela landscaping and then the Firewise landscaping or the, the state's fire coding. And so wanting to identify which to follow. If there are discrepancies, do we follow the Manuela or do we follow, um, the fire preferred landscaping? And so that was previously discussed here at the board, but I think that's something that needs more attention to, to tease out where those overlaps that would cause concerns would be, and then, um, bring it before us to be able to make a decision on which direction, um, in the future it would need to go.
No, understood. And what we can do is we can discuss with county staff, um, planning staff, and then up from there on, on which of the standards trumps what in this case? And if there are inherent conflicts, it might take additional research to determine how the state's evaluated that.
Thank you. And then, um, I had a question about parking. So there's the current table on parking spaces required, and, um, I think, like you say, you've cleaned that up a little bit. The question I have is, um, where does it specify parking for ADUs? You know, single-family dwellings, you just have one covered space per unit. But if you're adding, it says a guest house, one additional space per guest house?
So the ADU parking would be covered within the ADU ordinance itself. ADU ordinance is going to be part of Part Four. Uh, Part Four is part of the next round that'll come before Planning Commission, tentatively in August.
But again, if someone's just reading this table, they're going to go, "Where is ADUs?" I mean, there needs to be some sort of cross-reference so people don't have to go look it up in a different, um, space.
Understood, and what we can do here for that ease of use, we can add that line item here. And what I would probably do is cross-reference that line item back to Part Four, but we can make that connection between both.
And likewise, um, we have an issue where I am with Airbnbs. You know, where someone puts online, you know, three-bedroom house, um, you know, hosts eight because they have sofas and stuff. So then you have four cars trying to park in a one-single-family home. So where do you, how do you deal with vacation rentals and Airbnbs on this table?
I don't think we've dealt with vacation rentals or short-term rentals specifically. Um, I don't know, Martha, if you've dealt with parking with short-term rentals or short-term rental ordinances have the specific additional parking requirement?
I mean, you can add them, and I guess the approach would differ. And similar to the ADUs, I would then put those, if you do develop specific parking requirements for that, put that in the standards for specific uses and have the cross-reference here.
I, I do want to point out, you don't see short-term rentals here because the short-term rentals, when we started this project with, with staff, there was a list of items to include. Short-term rentals weren't on that list. If it is at the discretion of the Planning Commission to recommend a use like that be added, obviously to the parking section or maybe to Part Four, that is the recommendation the commission would have to make to staff, and then we would coordinate with staff on that.
Okay, so commissioners, do you think we need to deal with, you know, vacation rental parking? Or is it just me?
No, I agree. Parking is, is definitely a problem when you add, add a Airbnb to, in a, in a community, and there's never enough parking for everybody, and you end up with somebody parking in someone else's driveway.
So I would make a motion that we direct staff to, um, evaluate how to address, uh, guest parking for short-term rentals, uh, with, uh, contractors for this item.
Might I suggest that that's another good reason, um, for us to have business licenses in Trinity County? And perhaps the commission wants to direct staff to consider, um, that to be a, a conditional use of some sort of discretionary use where their, or use permit is required, where as part of, you know, getting a use permit to do a vacation rental, you have to say, "Hey, I'm going to have a single-family dwelling, but I'm going to rent it out with, you know, space for eight," and then you'll have to validate, you know, the amount of parking available through that use permitting process.
Well, then, I'll second, um, Commissioner Flights's motion with that potential amendment. Is that acceptable? Yeah?
Uh, I, I think I would want to know more about what would be, be required in the business license process. There would be generally an associated fee in such items. So I would like to know more about that before, like, I will approve evaluating it as an option, but not approve that direction at this point in time. Is that good?
Yep, that's good.
Second?
And if I can just confirm with the commission, was there still the interest in looking at having a short-term rental be a use that requires some sort of discretionary action and review by the commission before approval?
I think, I think so. I, I mean, that, that's a separate issue.
The issue, I just want to, because the issue was kind of folded into the discussion, but I didn't hear any action on that. And if that is an action, we are, and we are preparing Part Two right now, which is the zoning districts and use requirements. So that would be good information to receive as county staff and the consultant team to make sure it's included in a draft that comes before you, if that's the case.
Well, um, but I don't know that we know yet what level of review, whether it's a DUP or a CUP, right?
Correct, but I would want to ensure if the commission would like to have that use included, we can at least include the use in that table, and then we can have a permit discussion when it's brought forward to you.
Okay, that makes sense.
Sounds great. And then Commissioner Fall, do we also, uh, need anything to address tiny homes? Or will that all be covered in the ordinance?
Um, to me, a tiny home would fall under a single-family dwelling, which is the one covered space per unit. And again, I, I kind of worry about what's, why does your parking space have to be covered? I know at my house, my, my parking is not covered. And then one additional space per guest house. So if tiny homes are single-family dwellings, then
Well, so I guess it's just that
They have to have parking.
I guess it's just, is that going to be the single-family dwelling? That's the first unit on the property? Or is it going to be the guest house? That's the additional unit? And so it, and, so I think we could use some clarity there.
Are, are you, are you getting that? What do we do about tiny homes?
I, I would say it would still be treated like a single-family home. They would have to supply one parking space as what's noted in the draft before you. The decision, uh, the Planning Commission to whether that space is covered or not is at your discretion.
What, what?
Uh, this gets back to Commissioner Harper's, uh, comment. I mean, why do you need to cover your parking space?
There is no right or wrong answer to that. Again, this is a first draft that comes before you, and this is where we're starting to gather the feedback to make sure that what we're providing actually meets the pulse of what the commission and community is looking for. So if
Well, is that in addition? See, again, is that the way it is now?
So what's, how your code reads now is that it's one garage carport, one garage or carport or parking space per unit. So what, the edit that was made was to make it one covered space?
So, and I, so I am in compliance now because I have uncovered parking space, but under this, I would not be
Correct.
compliant. Okay, I don't like that. Sorry. Much snow! Snow would squinch it. So I think, I think, uh, covered is a little ridiculous for Trinity County.
We can modify that?
I would second that.
We can make that modification, and it'll be part of the public review draft.
Perfect.
And then, Bryn, when are our comments from the Planning Commission as a whole due to you before it goes out for public comment? When do you need all of our little questions or comments?
That is a date that we're still working with staff on.
Okay.
But staff will be able to provide you a timeline of when Planning Commission comments are due. As I'd mentioned in the beginning, our plan on this is to take all of your feedback from this session and the time that we determine with staff. We incorporate all of that feedback, and then that's going to be the formal public review draft that'll go out for public comment, similar to the general plan, like a 60-day co, uh, comment period. I anticipate that to be later this year because we want to make sure that we have all the parts of the zoning ordinance, uh, together at one time.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, one, one last thing. Uh, so the section on signs. How do you, um, convey that there are separate sign standards for the historic districts?
I did see that in the, like, there's a brief component on it. I was just looking at it for that same thing, um, and it is in line with what's currently in the ordinances. But I, I think it needs to be specified a little bit better. It doesn't call out the three historic districts very, uh, clearly to tell people that they need to comply for Helena, Weaverville, and Lewiston. It's under the special treatment section, and so if we can do something that, um, just brings better attention to that, and maybe even higher up somewhere, cross-reference, like, if you are in these districts, you need to follow the subsections, subsection instead of they continue reading the upper sign language.
I think one possibility here is we can add the, name those three districts, refer out to the separate section. And I think there's also the ability to modify the applicability section, 1760020. And we can state that, uh, the historic districts have their own section of applicable signs cross-referenced here. So I think we can do that in two or three areas.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because you, you break out agricultural districts, rural residential districts, um, you know, single-family districts, so why wouldn't you just list historic districts? Were you listing those special districts and, and just have, you know, language there?
So that's where signs, I think you're, where you are, because I was looking at it. Signs require a permit, and so if you look under 17.60090, that's the sign standards by zone, and that has the architectural review and preservation special treatment, and has those, historic district requirements there.
Yeah, if I, if I may, I feel at a complete disadvantage by not having the, the, the ordinance, the original or the new one at hand. We have these, um, these concepts of changes, but I don't have any of the, the narrative in front of me. And every other meeting that I have been to at the Planning Commission has provided me with a physical staff report. And so this is, I mean, I'm here, and I will give the input to the best of my ability, but I feel like I'm at a complete disadvantage to represent, um, the information and my constituents without being able to reference. I, I mean, I'm looking over Commissioner Fall's shoulder to be able to see this. I think this is, that's inappropriate.
And we can coordinate with county staff on how to address that moving forward.
Excellent. Any other discussion from the commissioners?
I just want to confirm that we're also making sure that within signage section that we're referencing the need to, um, comply with Caltrans permitting as well and within easements within their right-of-ways, and making sure that that's clearly spelled out here.
We can create a cross-reference to, uh, to those standards to ensure that there's applicability there as well, similar to the historic district.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Back to you, Mr. Minter-Harnish.
Do we, uh, do, sorry. Do we need to finish our motion with our direction to staff so that's officially recorded?
Sure. Thank you.
So for discussion, for, um, for clarity, we are going to be bringing, um, the discussion forward to, of where to put vacation rentals in terms of what level of permitting, but not necessarily giving direction of where we want, um, what level of permitting is needed for a vacation rental?
For discussion purposes? Yes, I agree.
I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear on what I'm voting for.
Parking spaces also.
Yeah, it was to consider how, how you, um, would, um, in, in what appropriate section of the zoning or... Yeah, I guess in zoning, you would specify parking needed for vacation rentals, and then also to look at the, evaluate whether or not, um, going through some business license process or equivalent for vacation rentals would be appropriate. Am I saying that right?
Correct.
Did I capture what you wanted? What was, yeah, what Drew said earlier.
I mean, that was just a suggestion, you know, you as the commission, um, get to direct us as staff, so...
It seems, this seems the appropriate place to look at it.
It was a great suggestion.
Yeah, those people from the Bay Area need to cough up some business license money. Okay, next section.
All good?
Are we ready to, do we need a roll call vote, or do you just need a? Are you gonna group vote?
Correction in the parking.
Chair, if I may as well.
Sure thing.
Probably want to open it up for public comment as well, to see if anybody from the public would like to mention anything.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on section three? In the room?
Lisa Wright-Lewiston. So I'm okay for public comment, right? All right, thank you. I kind of want to echo what Duncan had said regarding the availability of kind of what's actually happening with these slide summaries. It's really not clear and transparent to me. I kind of feel like something might be happening that we don't see. So I just want to make that point. I think that there needs to be, it would be helpful, I think, if you had up maybe the comparisons. I think the, if you could do redlining, a markup document, so we could see what's being changed in the current code, that would be very helpful to me and the public, and I'm getting a lot of nods up here as well. For transparency, there's kind of an inherent, maybe distrust of this overall process, and so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Morning, or afternoon. Uh, Vidette VanderWiden-Lewiston. I agree. This doesn't, this smells real weird. And we can't see it, but I've written down a couple of things at the board of supervisor meeting last week. Commissioner, or superintendent, sorry, Carpenter Harris mentioned unintended consequences. I think that is something very much that we need to speak to tonight, because I have seen many things done in this county that have had unintentional consequences, that when those unintentional consequences came down, it screwed someone's business. It screws someone's home. So let's open the floor to putting that into your motions, so that we don't screw people in 30 years down the road. The other thing that clearly concerns me is the lack of integrity of our administration. I've seen it. I've watched him take a raise when many of us were told to go to the food bank, who worked for the county. This county isn't in integrity right now, and for you all to be laying, I'm not saying you all, sorry, for this administration to be in charge of approving this consultancy to come in who have zero pulse to a rural community, you can tell when we're talking about what we're talking about, and I hear things like, I'm imagining, I'm guessing. I don't want a consultancy imagining or guessing for our rural community. This is our community, and I think, Commissioner Harper, to your point, I think we're really afraid to get over, any over-regulated than we already are. We're a rural community for a purpose. Let's keep it purposeful. Let's keep us in our own power to be able to choose as landowners, as homeowners, to not have the matrix come in and dictate how we have to live and what we have to do. When people choose to get their 600 acres, or their 30 acres, or whatever it is, and to have their farm, let them have their farms. And stop over-regulating and bringing beliefs. We've already been through this in our history. We bring beliefs from other areas into here, put it into motion, and everybody has to take the outside beliefs as their own. When Trinity County has their own legacy of beliefs, let us be rural. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment in the room? Any other comment on Zoom?
Yes, John?
Good evening, commissioners. It's John Brower, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, John.
Yeah, uh, I agree with the previous commenters. This is, uh, this general plan update and zoning update have been a long time coming. The, the, the old ways of doing things in Trinity that have evolved over time largely, largely ignored the existing, uh, general plan until cannabis entered the scene. And then all of a sudden, the general plan becomes this crucial thing, and the cannabis applicants ponyed up over a million dollars to pay for this over the course of the first seven years of licensing of the program. Likely through an illegal, uh, fee tacked on, that has since been moderated down to a more reasonable amount. But, um, I think what we need here is transparency and a more thorough, thoughtful process, and perhaps more public engagement, just at the roots level, to really make sure we get this right. So it is a usable document that can really guide the land use in Trinity County for real, for the next 50 or 100 years. The county's never going to be able to pay for one of these again. They did on the backs of the green rush. It's one of the benefits of the green rush, I guess, to the county. But now that that's over, we're not going to have that funding again, from any source I can see. So let's just slow our roll here, make sure we get it right, make sure we're including the, you know, very diverse opinions and points of view, and from as broad a section of the county as possible. And make sure that even dissenting, unpopular views are heard, as they should be in a democracy, and, uh, and take our time and get this right. So I think having, uh, written copies that show, uh, existing document and track the changes is really a bare minimum, and perhaps some more public engagement along the way too. Not sure what the rush is with this. The, the housing element was long overdue, and that could affect, uh, county revenue and grants from the state in a big way. But now that that is, now that that is, uh, approved, I'm not sure what the rush is. I think it's far more important to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment on Zoom?
No, no more comments on Zoom.
We're going to close public comment. Commissioner Fall has a redirect question, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Yeah, I, I brought this up earlier. I just wanted to make it clear. So swimming pools, it says, have to be constructed on the rear half of the parcel if it's residential. Like I said, I, I, you know, my property is owned rural residential. It is 44 acres. Who cares where I put my swimming pool? So is there a way to have setbacks or something? You know, uh, something other than, what's the rear? I don't even know what the rear half of my parcel is.
Yeah, I would second what Commissioner Fall is saying, that some of that makes sense within the urban areas, such as Weaverville, or potentially a Hay Fork, where there are smaller front yards and there are larger backyards, based on the major roads or major arteries. But that that should come down to more of, um, into the subsections of what your actual zone is. And so if we could tease some of that out and, and reallocate that where it's most appropriate, I think that would be, um, something we should look at and can, um, provide some direction on. I'll also, um, would like to support what Commissioner McIntosh put forth, that it, it has been difficult to only have it digitally, and so having a printed copy would definitely help. And then furthermore, just wanted to identify that with the directions that were given the past two days at the joint sections, will we be able to see some of those updates for inclusion? Specifically, you know, one example is just that looking right now, the zoning only includes, sorry, uh, refuse and recycling, but we also did identify composting, uh, yesterday's meeting. So I'm just, I'm wondering if we will be able to see some of those items incorporated at all before, uh, it goes out to public comment, so that we have a chance to comment and help get it in alignment before it goes out to the public.
Sure, a few things here. So we talked about swimming pools. Again, that's, that's a pretty typical standard, and so we brought that forward for review, easily modified. Building, building code has separation requirements. We can just focus on separation requirements from structures and go from there. If there is the interest in more urbanized areas, we can also have standards for smaller parcels where we may, may be not be appropriate in some instances to be in the front yard, depending on parcel sizes, what Commissioner Fall is getting to. But we can revisit and tweak those and bring those back. Yes, there were a lot of discussion items that came up in the last two days of, at the general plan meetings. Obviously, those are not included here, because those decisions were just made, so we will need to make some of those adjustments. What we can do is work with county staff to determine how and when that revised draft comes back to a planning commission before it goes public. But that is something that I don't have a answer to right now, because we're still in discussions.
You know, and just reading, I'm just sitting here reading some of the new sections, because I didn't have a chance to really read them all. I mean, like fencing, it's, it's prohibiting the use of electrified fences, which, you know, I used to have one around my vegetable garden. I have friends that have them around their beekeeping operations. But you can't have a electrified fence unless it's needed for livestock or ranch operations. I wouldn't consider my vegetable garden or beekeeping livestock or ranch operations. I mean, there's just a lot of language in here that we really haven't had a chance to look at, that's really just not appropriate for Trinity.
And I do want to actually go back to swimming pools. I want to point something out. 1730-070, talking about location. The original text for swimming pools says, swimming pools in any shall be constructed on the rear half of the lot. Or, I go, from what I'm seeing, is, is that part of your existing? Because what we can do is, we can work with staff to provide some track change versions of documents, but I just want to confirm that in 1730-070, that language is not already in existence.
What, what I'm looking at, 1730-070, and it doesn't specify whether it's modified. But what it says is, swimming pools in any residential zone, which would be me, shall be constructed on the rear half of the parcel.
Do you have the, do you have your current zoning ordinance in front of you, Commissioner Fall?
Yeah.
Do you mind going to 1730-070? I just, I just want to, I just want to confirm.
I'm getting there. Okay. Rear half of the lot.
So that standard already exists. So that's, that's what I, that's where I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with the commission. It would probably be beneficial to, to have some sort of version where you can see the change. And I, I, I understand that, and we can discuss with county staff. And I think that, I think the, the discussion on this item could have been resolved if you had actually seen those two things, seeing that some language is actually already existing in your current zoning ordinance. In the updated version, the, we changed lot to parcel. Uh, that's just a terminology change. So I, I, I'm, I'm agreeing with the commission. I think more transparency on the drafts before you would be better and would help the commission out through the process.
Well, and fixing, you guys want to fix stuff too. You don't want to just, if it didn't make sense historically, we don't want to put it in here if it doesn't make sense currently.
And this, this zoning ordinance before you tonight, part three, part five, and part six, did go through extensive staff review, and that's why we're here, is to bring it forth to the planning commission, where if something doesn't make sense, we can make those adjustments and changes.
Right, so, um, with these concerns that we're bringing up, because again, I don't think we're going to be able to, as a commission, speak to it appropriately tonight. So communicating with us, you know, one, the best way to communicate these concerns. And as a commission, we won't be able to provide consolidated feedback for a little bit, because we'll need time to review and then provide some feedback. Because I don't think any of us are ready to make solid decisions on this tonight. And then also, I will say that from the commissioner's standpoint, yeah, we need to look at this critically once we get a decent draft to identify what makes sense from the historical perspective of what was there, but also what's new being proposed. And so I'm just helping communicate to us what the process will be and the timeline. Uh, once you guys have that figured out, would be very helpful. Because I think some of us could, could start digging in and send some feedback, but I don't know if that's the best way to, to do it moving forward. So, uh, we'll need some direction on the process for providing our feedback, bringing that feedback to the commission again, to make sure it's approved by all of us, uh, and reviewed by all of us, as to what changes have been proposed before things go any further.
And, sorry, one last point, just for the general public's information. The maximum height for fences that you're proposing is seven feet, not eight feet. And that, so just so people know, that, that is, maybe makes a difference to people.
And I would just add to the fencing, you know, because of our rural nature, so many people do use the electrified wires to protect their orchards and apple tree, you know, because the bears.
Keep my dogs home.
If there's no further discussion, and we've got public comment? Minter-Harnish?
Can you pull back up the PowerPoint?
All right, I'm going to take over for part five, which is permit processing. And part five presents the processing procedures for permits and approvals that are required under the zoning code. So the next slide says a summary of what's included, and it really covers everything from application process procedures that are common to various permitting, or permits and processes and procedures. Then it has the procedures for individual types of permits and reviews, and then bookends with the post-decision implementation, time limits, revocation procedures. So, um, on the next slide, just generally what's changed with the update, we've maintained a bulk of the existing provisions. And part of that is because for processes and procedures, those don't change much. Like a conditional use permit, it requires public noticing, a hearing before the planning commission, and it's appealable. But what does change, or with the update, what we've, um, tried to do was consolidate like procedures, standardize things, make things better organized, just make them easier to use and understand, and have a more concise and complete process detailed in those. So with the next series of slides, I'm going to summarize the major sections in part five. So the first section on the next slide is the general provisions and application procedures. So these are uniform procedures that are common to multiple procedures or permit applications. So, um, the, um, application process, the required fees, the, um, review for completion, uh, process. So the main kind of change with this is that those provisions are grouped together in one section of common procedures. Uh, then the next section is procedures for an administrative zoning clearance. So this is a codification of really what's a current practice of making sure that as things come forward, they're checked for consistency with the zoning code or other discretionary approvals. So having a formal procedure is very helpful in certain circumstances where, say, you have home occupation permits, or increasingly where the state, um, is allowing certain housing by right. This is the process that verifies that, um, you're aware of the zoning requirements, that they've been checked, that they comply with them, and there's a formal documentation of that. So the next slide, um, has the next two sections, which are director's use permit and conditional use permits. And currently, these procedures, um, are kind of grouped together in one section under use permits. It's a little confusing of what's required how. There isn't actually one separate section for director's use permits that kind of details that. So we've separated them out, so it's clear what the different procedures are. So we've separated them out, so it's clear what the different procedures are. They're both discretionary permits, a director's use permit. The director is the decision maker, notices to abutting property owners, and there's a hearing if somebody appeals that decision. Whereas a conditional use permit, the planning commission's the decision maker, public notice to property owners within 300 feet. There's a published notice, and there's also a hearing before the planning commission. The next slide, actually, this is a new type of permit, a temporary use permit. So in your use regulations, you're going to have standards for temporary uses. And there's going to be some that are allowed without requiring a permit. An easy example is like a garage sale. And then there will be a grouping of temporary uses that do require a temporary use permit. And so these are the procedures for that type of use or temporary use that meets that threshold or criteria for a temporary use permit. The temporary use permit has some findings regarding nuisances, impacts to circulation, and then conditions can be attached to that permit. And that's really to just, you know, make sure that that temporary use is operating in a way that it is not causing problems for surrounding uses or others. And the next slide has, the next series of sections is really related to consideration of modifications to required standards for certain circumstances, and they kind of differ on purposes or levels of modification allowed. So the first is reasonable accommodation. And this is a refinement of your current procedures for reasonable accommodation for persons with disabilities. And that's for compliance with ADA and fair housing laws. Again, you have this in your code already. We're just kind of rewriting it, streamlining it, trying to make it more concise and easy to use. The next section is modifications, which is a new procedure by which the county can consider modifications as either specified somewhere in the code. You know, you can modify the standard under these circumstances, or there's a modification of up to 10% of dimensional requirements. If there is an associated permit, that request for the modification would be processed with that permit. Say there's a use permit required, so you just group those together and consider those at once. If there's no other permit required, the director would make the decision on that. And that's to give, again, the county the ability to consider some flexibility where it makes sense. And then the third type is a variance procedure, which you're probably familiar with, you have now. That is, if the request for variation exceeds what's allowed under a modification, it could go through a variance process. Variances, though, are required by state law. You have to make certain findings for them, that there's something extraordinary about the circumstance that precludes that property from enjoying the same rights that other properties in the area in the same situation enjoy. Those do require public notice and hearing before the planning commission. Then the next sections, on the next, yep, on the next slides, detailed provisions that apply after a decision is made. So detail the findings, the effective dates, time extensions. A change here is increasing the time for which discretionary permits are active or extending the time that they're effective before they expire. So we've extended that time for a discretionary permit for five years, plus the opportunity for a one-year time extension. And that's in recognition of that time before, say, planning commission approval to when you get financing and your building permits and you're actually ready to go to construction, sometimes takes a while. And so that was one thing particularly I worked with staff on, modifying that time. And then finally, the last section of Part V is the revocation and modification procedures. So this is the process by which the county may consider revoking or modifying approvals. Typically, this isn't used often. It is typically used in enforcement-type cases. If conditions of approval aren't being adhered to, there's a public nuisance. It can also be used if there's a permit that's been allowed that runs with the land, and then that use has been vacated for a number of years. And the county wouldn't want that to restart up under the old permit. So this is a public process that the county would need to go through, public hearing, public notice, and review by that original review authority. And that is just a quick overview of Part V, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller, for your presentation. Commissioners?
Okay. The garage sale thing kind of went bing in my head because there's a 30-day, you have to apply for a temporary use permit 30 days beforehand. So it seemed like there's certain temporary uses where that's not, like, reasonable. Can you, I realize that the temporary uses are going to be listed elsewhere, but I mean, is there some flexibility there? Someone comes in a couple of weeks beforehand and wants to get a simple temporary use permit?
Yeah, so I would say yes, and you can handle it in a number of ways. And you might, your opinion might change after you see those draft provisions.
Yeah, what you're requiring to get a temporary use permit, right.
So you could just change what's in the code, like, change it to 10 days, change it to seven days, whatever number of days. And you might get some input from staff on what might be appropriate, the review that they do. But even if you do keep it as 30 days in the code, if somebody came in, "I want to do this in 10 days," there would, if the county can appropriately do the review in that amount of time, there's no reason why the county would have to hold it for 30. But it really just depends on, you know, allowing staff to do the appropriate review.
Right, I mean, right now, it's pretty much, you know, it's 30 days ahead of time you have to apply.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be 10 business days or something, depending on what they're applying for.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, I just worry about that. Because I have a yard sale this weekend.
Where will we have a list of the uses that will require a temporary use permit?
That would be in Part IV.
Okay.
Yeah, along with the ADUs and the other uses.
Okay, then I had a question about variances. I mean, we have pretty specific language in 1731 about variances, you know, and planning commission, we've talked about variances a lot. It's like, you know, there's no special privilege. It's prohibited if it's just a use variance. You know, there's criteria listed in there. And I know the state criteria is that, you know, there's a unique hardship due to size, shape, or topography of the parcel. So none of those specifics are in there, it's just really general language. I really think, you know, we need to carry over what we have now, what we've been using, and what's in the state law in terms of when, just make it clearer, when someone can qualify for a variance.
Okay. So yeah, we can incorporate more of the existing specific language that you have, if that is helpful in your review of variances, yeah.
Any other discussion from the commissioners?
Would this permitting process, this section, be appropriate? More towards Commissioner Harper's comment about opportunity for exemptions? Would that need to be covered in this section?
I don't think so. I think the issues that Commissioner Harper is talking about or the exceptions that he's looking for is not exceptions from the zoning code. What I'm hearing is it's more either from the construction code, building code, or county fees.
Any other discussion from the commissioners?
I mean, again, it's hard looking at this where there's a lot of TBDs, you know, to be determined. So I'm like, well, okay.
And the TBDs are, and yes, I hear you on that. The TBDs are for just section numbers, and because we don't know what those section numbers are, they wouldn't lead you anywhere yet.
I also think it's worth noting, this is a study session. It's not, we're not changing it tonight. We're having a discussion about what something realistically is going to be changed in two years from now. So a study session is just a chance for us to discuss it. I understand the limitations by not having the documentation in front of us, and we're learning from tonight's meeting. But it's worth discussing that it's just a discussion. Any other comments from the commissioners before I open it to public comment? Can we open it to public comment, please? Any comment in the room?
I have just a couple. Lisa Wright, Lewisville. So the ministerial permitting is covered under the administrative zoning clearance? Is that where, because we're talking about temporary use permit, temporary permits, director's use permits, conditional use permits, but the ministry, like your building permits, and is that part of this permit processing? I just see it referenced in the administrative zoning clearance, so is that the only place that?
So an administrative zoning clearance is a ministerial permit. A building permit is also ministerial, but that's not in this code. This code doesn't regulate building permits.
The only thing it doesn't regulate, the only permit? Or does it, are there others, like well permits or septic? None of that? That's, those are all ministerial, but they're a different section? Okay, and then how about this, I always forget it's called the permit, Permit Streamlining Act? How are we covering that to ensure proper, timely processing of these type of applications?
So that is in the application processing procedures, talking about the application review. So the review for completeness and the 30 days.
For that, yeah.
That is in Part V. So in my document, it's 1702070, application review.
I'm just looking at your slides. I haven't gotten, I don't, yeah.
In my slides, it was... Do you want to bring the, can you bring the slide back up? It's near the beginning, so it's right after the what's changed slide. If you keep going back.
General provisions and application processing? Uniform procedures that are common to application process? That's really, really vague. I have no clue what uniform procedures are that are common to the application process. I think more information, I really think, state agencies are very clear on permit streamlining and the requirements, and when things are approved, if you don't, if staff doesn't get to it, et cetera. Is that going to be detailed somewhere?
Told in the draft, Part V. So.
Okay. To the attention of the commission or for just kind of review and understanding that that's in here somewhere? I'm just kind of, I feel like we're just hitting such limited amount of information, but there's so much behind it that's actually potentially being changed or updated. I mean, I'm just still getting that lack of information feeling where it's really, I can't see how you can study it when you don't have the information. So I'm really struggling with that, I'm sorry.
It's not just you. Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on Zoom?
John?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, John, go ahead.
Thanks, I haven't caught the whole conversation. I've been in and out of reception, but I think part of, part of the frustration is with something like this, is Trinity has this long history of not having qualified, hard-working staff like we do currently. And so there's a history of applying for things like permits, and then nothing ever happens. Prior to recent times, and the current staff that are doing a really, really good job, those sort of things just weren't always possible here, depending on who was riding that desk or funding at that time. And so when we get into things like temporary permits, there needs to be a really clear, unambiguous, that if it is not approved within a certain amount of time, processed and approved, then it's, or denied, then it's deemed approved. There need to be fail safes like that built into something like this for Trinity. And something like the 10% modification allowed, that was, I did catch that part. You know, something more like 20% modification to be allowed without triggering another permit might be more appropriate in a place like Trinity County. We really need to broaden this and make it feasible in a place like Trinity. And we're currently staffed on the, really still on the funding and resource revenue bubble of the green rush, but that will pass, that is passing. And so even though current staff is doing a great job, we need to be able to build this general plan and the zoning code to be able to be functional here with a dysfunctional county government, which is likely to return at some point. That's all for me at the moment. I guess I would recommend changing that 10% that I heard to 20% and continuing along that same sort of reasoning. You know, the things that would trigger a temporary permit in a normal city or a more populated county might just be ridiculous here. And there would still be a charge, even if it was a temporary permit in the, you know, what is the poorest county in the state most years. So I think we need to be really careful and avoid overregulation here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment on Zoom?
No other comments on Zoom.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment, and Commissioner Paul has a redirect.
I'm going to actually pretend I'm speaking as Tom Blanco in public comment because I've taken this note from him several times, which, and the question is timeframes. Maybe it's in the next section, but the agency I used to work for, when you applied for something, staff had to request additional information within a certain timeframe. You know, there were different, you know, so that something didn't, you didn't apply, and then it just sat on the shelf for a long time. So have you guys considered specifying timeframes in this?
Yes, and that is also related to the Permit Streamlining Act that the commenter talked about. So, and it isn't included in here. And I'm sorry for the broad summary. The idea is, there is a lot of information throughout the whole thing, giving a summary to introduce you to what's in it, and then allow you to spend some time getting into the document. But for application review, the county is limited to 30 days. So within 30 days, they have to respond in writing of whether the application is complete for processing or if it's incomplete. And if it's incomplete, they have to detail why it is incomplete, what other information is necessary, and then give them time to resubmit. Once there is a resubmital, that starts the clock again, and the county again has a maximum of 30 days to respond. And that is in here.
That is in this document? Where would I find that?
So my numbering is 1702070, application review.
Thank you.
Hello? Okay, so that would be an application that has been fully submitted. But in this, it's also included a preliminary review. And that's not, the Streamlining Act does not apply to that. And so that preliminary review is just, from my understanding, is just an applicant bringing a draft application to the appropriate representatives for review to get initial.
application to the appropriate representatives for review to, to get initial feedback on what might be missing, on what doesn't meet standard to then continue. Correct? Yes. And so that optional preliminary review is not subject to the Permit Streamlining Act. And yes, it's more of an informational thing. It might be, maybe somebody is interested in buying a property, but only if they can do something on it. So they want to kind of get the pulse of what's required and just a reaction. So it's informational. So if I could ask county staff, that seems like some, a good amount of burden if you, if you're reviewing it multiple times to have this go through. And there's, I understand not having a timeline on that, but also see it from the other side of the landowners needing some feedback, but because they actually haven't submitted an application, there's no timeline attached. And so with current workloads and current projects on the docket, how does that preliminary review process play in with actual applications? And if you have feedback about helping staff workload to balance any of this, I think I would be interested in getting your comments and feedback to make sure that this is consistent in supporting our staff members.
Yeah, so we do currently, you know, informally offer that. You know, whether it be questions that are getting asked at the counter or, you know, a more specific review of kind of, you know, the first step and someone trying to put together all the pieces for a complete application. In terms of the overall efficiency, I think that generally that's probably helpful and, and creates efficiency to guide someone on how to give, you know, submit a complete application packet rather than having to do a formal review on a timeline and then have a bunch of back and forth with incomplete applications in terms of adequately, you know, balancing all the priorities and allocating staff time from a budgetary perspective. It, it could be sensible to establish some sort of fee in conjunction with that pre-application meeting, but we, we generally try to just do it informally, keep it to a half an hour and bring in what you got and we'll sit down and look at it with you real quick. So that, if that helps to kind of give you some understanding of, you know, that we already engage in that. And I think that it does make sense to do that rather than someone spending a ton of time and/or money to then just give us an incomplete application because they really didn't understand the specifics of what was being requested. You know, I don't know if you've looked at the current CUP or DUP application forms that are on the planning division or cannabis division website, but there are a lot of items. So, so that's kind of the function that we want to try and guide people in the right direction so that they understand what all they need to do. Because they may not, you know, technically understand what the three words that we understand specifically, that means a, you know, 100-page document. They, they might not understand that or they might have a project description that doesn't hit all the points. And so they're not really thinking about, you know, their, their project as comprehensively as we might be, given that we understand the review process more closely.
Right. Or in lieu of requiring a fee that as part of this process, we could look at defining better what that preliminary review looks like and how many opportunities a specific project could have to go through preliminary review and just set some clear expectations of planning staff would not spend more than X hours during a preliminary view on a project and such project could only have up to three. Or, or, you know, I'm throwing odd numbers out here and it would need a lot more discussion, but set some expectations to that component.
Yes, and I would definitely agree with that. And the standard right now is like Drew said, 30 minutes. But sometimes we get people in that aren't really even sure how to get where they want to go. And so they may start off in one direction, but then you actually guide them to a more appropriate use of where they're trying to get to, if that makes sense. Because sometimes people come in and there, there's a whole bunch of ideas and we help them kind of narrow those ideas down to kind of get somewhere. And what Drew said is absolutely fact. Because I would say probably two years ago, we weren't even thinking about this because there was just too much of a backlog and all that. And so we might go back and forth, you know, five times. And then it just gets so frustrating and then the people really just walk away and stop because they can't continue doing that. You know, they get frustrated that we're not answering all their questions. But when they just bring in the package and say, here you go, it kind of puts you in a position where you go, okay, well, that's not good enough. And so we did start doing the preliminary review to kind of request people to come in and have those conversations. But like I told staff, we shouldn't be doing that for more than one hour and it's a one-time thing unless there is some real circumstances. I mean, that's the way I lean on it. So that's really what I want to see from all divisions. But this isn't just planning. This isn't just, you know, cannabis. This is environmental health. This is building. People, people don't come in with a set, this is where I'm going to go, point A to point Z. They actually come in and they need help. And so that's really where the preliminary, you know, intake and interview. But we also just do straight up meetings. You know, if somebody comes in or they call and they say, we would just like some help on how to establish where we want to go in the most, you know, efficient manner, we also do that as well. Preliminary, yes, sometimes, but sometimes people, people, they come in and they think something, but then they, they really just kind of change their minds and they decide, well, maybe that's not what I want to do right now because it is too onerous. And, you know, getting to the public comment and stuff, this really is where we need to start thinking about this stuff. We are a rural community and I can appreciate what Commissioner Harper said earlier about, you know, we reveal as an urban environment, when you compare that to District Five down south. We need to not forget that stuff. This is not LA. I mean, yesterday it was brought up in the meeting about freeways. I don't even understand how that would ever even be in something that we're even talking about. There's no freeways, you know? So this, this meeting was designed to be a first general basic overview of what's going on. And we can get into some nitty gritty, but that's really not even what this was about. This was just, hey, here's the slides, here's kind of what's happening. You guys are going to get this formally and I definitely think that we're going to do the track changes so that everybody gets that because that would definitely help with some of the public view. But we really weren't even, this wasn't really designed to start getting down into the weeds just yet. It was just.
Yeah, but we didn't know what, we didn't know what you wanted, so here you go.
Right. And, you know, and I can apologize for that for sure. You know, when I sent out the documents earlier this week, you know, it was about understanding that we are going more of a digital age, we are going more of a paperless age, you know? But back to your comments today when we were talking via email. You know, this is something that, this, this is very, very, going back to what John was saying. This is, we need as much transparency as possible basically because this is one of those things that is going to be around for 25 more years. So we really do need to try to get this right. And so, you know, we're learning here as we go too. So I just appreciate everybody's patience with this. And I do appreciate all the work that you guys have put into this. But as you can see and feel, and we already kind of anticipated that zoning was going to be the big monster. And it really is because these people, they have PTSD on a lot of this. And I don't use that word lightly being prior military, but they're not in a position where they automatically just accept everything. So we just need to remember that going forward as well. Sorry, I didn't mean to ramble on there, but.
I accept your apology. If there's a, can we take a five-minute recess?
Sure.
Please? I live and hope that we're on slide 32 of 40. So a five-minute recess hopefully will get us out of here pretty quick. Thank you.
I think it was Friday, so yeah. Yeah, it was just email. I know we got it before all that started. So it had, I think it was Friday or Monday.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear us on Zoom?
Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Can you give us a thumbs up or thumbs down on Zoom?
Yes, we can hear you on Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to Mentor Harnish.
Okay, now we're on to Part Six, which is zoning code administration. As she's bringing up the slides, that Part Six includes provisions for the responsibilities under the code and its administration. So it starts with a summary of the responsibilities of bodies under the code and then has provisions for legislative actions such as amendments, specific plans, and provisions for public noticing, hearings, appeals, nonconformities, and enforcement. So on the next slide, kind of similar to Part Five, generally, we've maintained the substance of existing procedures, updated them for clarity, to be more complete, concise, reflect best practices, and again, I'll go through a summary of each of the sections. So the first section is the administrative responsibility, which describes the basic roles and functions of the director, the planning commission, and the board of supervisors under the zoning code. So it's not an exhaustive list of all the responsibilities, but it's just generally the responsibilities assigned to them under the zoning code. Then there are the procedures to amend the zoning code, the zoning map, and the general plan, which you are going through that process right now. That process is largely set by state law, and so the procedures reflect that. Planning commission is the recommendation, recommending body to the board of supervisors who makes the decision and actually does the adoption. The next section is specific plans, and this is a new section in your code incorporating a planning process that's available to you under the government code and kind of been asked, is it, is it similar to our community plans? Is that what this process is? And it's different than your community plans in that the government code has some specific requirements for specific plans. And generally, that's that they include development standards, an implementation program, and financing mechanism. So the, should the count, it's an enabling ordinance, so should the county want to go through a specific planning process and adopt that, these are the processes for it. It is a legislative action, so again, it's the planning commission that makes a recommendation to the board of supervisors on that. The next section is the public notice and hearing. So the, wherever public notice is required throughout the code or a public hearing is required, these are the procedures for that. For public hearings, the notice is required to be mailed to owners within 300 feet, published newspaper notice, as well as optional posted notice requirement. If notice is requirement, but there is no public hearing required, then it's, notice is required to be to abutting owners, and these are in line with your current requirements. The next section is on appeals, and decisions of the director may be appealed to the planning commission, the planning commission may be appealed to the board of supervisors, it has the provisions for that. In order to appeal a decision, the appellant must participate in the process before that decision. So either appear in person, having a representative there, submitting written comments, need to participate in that process so that concerns can be considered during that hearing or in that decision before it can be appealed. And then the appeal is limited to the issues that are raised by the applicant or something that maybe wasn't known at the time of the hearing or that decision was being made. The next section is nonconformities. So these are addressing uses, structures, lots that were legally established and at the time in compliance with the rules and regulations in place at the time, but because of changes to those codes and requirements, they no longer comply. So nonconformities may continue, provided there's no increase in that nonconformity. But the provisions have been revised to allow some more flexibility, to allow additions to and the enlargement of nonconforming residences in, say, nonresidential zones. And that's in recognition that these are people's homes. This is not, you know, often, we used to think about nonconformities as we want to get rid of them, that they are a problem, that they're wrong. But this is recognizing that nonconforming residents, people live there, their family may grow, there's no reason to kind of limit them or force them out of their home if it no longer meets the needs. But, so that's been included, as well as some allowances for expansion of nonresidential, nonconforming uses through a director use permit. Again, that's a discretionary permit, allows the county to consider enlargement of nonconforming residential uses. Sometimes those nonconforming uses are actually part of the community, make the community unique, and are benign or even beneficial. So, again, kind of that notion of just because you're nonconforming, you're bad, is kind of moved from the, the sense of the regulations or the approach. Yeah, you had a question?
Yeah, with the expansion, would that, would the expansion need to be, fall within updated codes, or would the expansion fall within the code of the nonconforming, of the time when it was originally built?
So per the, for the zoning, it is required to meet the current standard. So say, except in some situations for setbacks. So say, something is nonconforming because it has a two-foot setback instead of a five-foot setback. If you're doing an expansion, you can continue that setback for zoning because it just is a hardship to kind of create that notch, right? And we've all kind of adjusted to that other setback. But say, a structure is nonconforming to height, say it's 60 feet when the height limit's 30 feet. That addition would need to meet the 30-foot height limit. You couldn't go up to 60. And then you would need to meet current building code requirements, again, that are separate from the zoning. Yeah. And then the last part are the enforcement provisions. So this revises your existing provisions to reference and rely more on your county code sections that cover enforcement and penalty generally. And so what happens oftentimes if you try and repeat, or, you know, sometimes there's redundancies, or you're repeating, or there's conflicts between the two. So we're looking at more heavily letting those general enforcement procedures apply. And then we did include some provisions to clarify that a permit cannot be issued on a property that has an existing code violation unless certain findings are made. So unless you're taking care of that code violation, or there's other methods of correction for that. So if you have a code violation, you can't issue permits on that property unless certain findings are made. And that is the summary of Part Six.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Commissioners? Discussion?
Just a question. So the appeals process, it goes to the, you know, the planning commission makes a decision, somebody doesn't like it, goes to the board of supervisors, board of supervisors makes a decision. It has judicial review. No person shall seek judicial review of a county decision on a planning permit or other matter unless all available appeals to the commission and board have first been exhausted. What's a judicial review? I mean, if you want to hire a lawyer and you're doing just some kind of legal, you know, follow-up, is that a judicial review? What is that considered?
Right, if you're going to sue the county beyond.
Uh huh. Is that a judicial review?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion from the commissioners?
I just want to say thank you and that, sorry for my misunderstanding of tonight's intent, coming from the past two days where we were providing direction versus switching to getting an introduction tonight. So thank you guys for bearing with us. And then, I guess, by, questions really are for the public and for staff, for as we go through this review, if there's specific lenses and mindsets to, that we should be going through, or specific focuses, any concerns or areas that you want specific direction or feedback on, that would be helpful to receive that information as we go through this process. Thank you.
No other comments from commissioners? Can we open it up to public comment, please? And public comment in the room?
Good evening, commissioners. So the, I think it is important to see the, to hammer out the actual text and language of this carefully, word by word. Yeah. I know in the past, there was an administrative hearing, with an administrative hearing officer designated by the county in some way. Carol, it seemed like you had some input on that. I'm curious what you were going to say.
Yeah, I was just kind of trying to figure out exactly where stuff like that fit in. I don't think there's an administrative hearing officer option in there, unless, unless it's like part of the mediation process or something like that.
So I might not be 100% on this, but my recollection is, in terms of the administrative hearing officer, that's established in Chapter Eight, and is not currently a part of zoning code. And because, yeah, anyways, so that, that's where that process is laid out currently in county code, and it will stay there because we're not proposing to change that as part of zoning code updates.
Okay, thank you.
When I first started paying attention to this sort of stuff in Trinity County, the, the folks that had been paying attention for some time then talked about times when planning commission had periodically, over the decades, had to kind of assume the role of planning director, to build to, like, act as planning director for periods of time as, as the body and do much of the heavy lifting and communicating with other agencies even and such. Like, there have been times when it's been very dysfunctional in the past. And so I think it's important to, that the commission retain as much authority as possible if that was to occur again in the future. It's, things are rolling better than they ever have, I think presently, which is great. And, but I think we need as many fail safes as possible built into that, into this moving forward. And the commissioners and the planning commission kind of becomes this, much more, they wear many hats here from time to time. And so I don't know if it's really captured in current code, or if it was just kind of how it went during those times, and just kind of, it was just the ad hoc way to make things happen. But I think it's really important to try to capture some of that in this moving forward, if it isn't presently. And that we need to, you know, I think have a lot more public engagement on this as the other TBDs get filled in and as we see the actual language. Anywhere where you guys have more detailed proposed language tonight would be great to get into the nitty-gritty of that and start trying to work through that stuff sooner than later, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello?
So I have a question regarding, so specific plans, maybe I missed it and you described it. But what are, I guess, what are specific plans? There is a reference to ensuring they're in compliance with government code section 65450, which I think is also the government code section to ensure that any zoning ordinance matches the general plan, isn't in conflict with the general plan. Is that similar? Or, so that would be a question. I don't know if you, if you want to get answers on the fly or how you'd like to handle. I'm, that's really not public comment, I'm just making, answering, asking questions.
I think it's a workshop, so I think you can probably ask the question directly.
Okay, thank you.
So a specific plan is a specific planning document identified in the government code, similar to how general plans are identified in the, in the government code. But a specific plan is, has to be consistent with your general plan. And in the government code, it details what a specific plan needs to include. So it has a list of things that it needs to include in order to be a specific plan.
Of what they are, because I don't really know what a specific plan is.
So they need to, so in addition to typical planning stuff of a vision and desires for the area, it specifically has to include development standards, an implementation program, and financing mechanism.
So cannabis ordinance, our cannabis program, a specific plan?
Okay, it is, the specific plans are kind of synonymous with community plans.
But for undesignated communities? So this is a great question. So pick a little tiny community down river, like Hawkins Bar or something, and they said, we want a plan for just our geographic area. Would that be an example of where you could develop a specific plan?
Could. You do it as a specific plan, it has to meet the provisions in the government code. If you do it as a community plan, it might include all the same things as a specific plan, but you don't have to. So the community plan is a little more, it's more flexible, right? But if you, go ahead.
A specific plan is much more rigid, and all of the requirements in the government code make a specific plan more costly to put together. A community plan is more flexible and can have some of the same provisions, but you're not bound by what the government code is telling you to do within a community plan.
Or of incorporation by an area of the county? Do you have to, what, do you have to specific geographic boundaries?
You would have to have outlined boundaries, yes. I, I like to think of a, I like to think of a specific plan as like a smaller version of a general plan with all of those strict state requirements that are included. Yes.
Just a comment on the administrative process. So exhausting your administrative remedies, you might hear saying that, we have to go to planning, mostly, board, and then you can take it into court. But I do know that recently on a fine situation, I think it went right to the board of supervisors. I don't remember you guys deciding on fines in a cannabis project. But then it went to an administrative judge, didn't go into the court system. That administrative judge was another, like, lawyer from Reading or something. So I think we do have a process for that.
Again, that's in Chapter Eight.
Again, that's in Chapter Eight.
And so that, we're not covering that.
Not a part of zoning code.
Eight falls outside of the zoning code, but we do cross-reference where applicable to other sections of your municipal code.
Your reference to the appeal process is specific to the applications for zoning. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment in the room? Any other comment on Zoom?
No comments on Zoom.
Okay, no close public comment? I think we're finished. Thank you, Mentor Harnish, for your presentation. Thank you for the county for all your hard work. I understand that we're learning as we go, so the information we learned about email or online will help us moving forward. So thank you.
So I think Brent has a comment, question?
Just one final note. So the, what we'll do is we'll coordinate with county staff on, on track change versions that show the delineation of text changed, word changes. I think that'll help the Commission out, especially when it comes to the standards, the general development standards, and yes, on the specific standards and the allowable and permit requirements. That will definitely be helpful. So we'll coordinate with staff on getting those out. We'll talk about how drafts are brought back. I think based on tonight's discussion, that will need to be a further talk with us and the county staff. Tentatively, we did have it scheduled, and I say tentatively, for August 7th to bring back the next three parts. Depending on how these drafts turn around, and we receive comments from Planning Commission, that date might change. So I just want to note that, we had put that in the presentation yesterday, and stating it now, that tentative August 7th date might shift, just to allow more time for review on these first three parts for Planning Commission, and then on the next three parts. I will say the next batch that comes to you is a more substantial set of the zoning ordinance. That's, this is the real meat of the zoning ordinance, which is your allowable uses, permit requirements, and development standards. So anticipate that next draft to be fairly larger than what you have on your desk tonight.
Thank you. And then just an observation, I work in an extremely over-regulated industry. When they make revisions, at the last page of that section, they say what they revised and what it pertained to, which might be a suggestion. So if the standards change, they say, hey, on this date, we updated this section. Just an observation.
Understood.
Do we have any planning commissioner reports?
No, I just wanted to echo Commissioner Flights. I mean, I really apologize for getting into the weeds, but, you know, you know, when you say study session and you talk to a bureaucrat, I'm going into the weeds. So thank you for your patience.
Any other commissioner reports?
Yeah, I too echo Commissioner Flights and Commissioner Falls' sentiments. And thank you for the information. I also would just like to let the Commission know that I will not be in the area on August 7th. So if it gets pushed back a little bit, it won't hurt my feelings.
Deputy Director of Community Development reports?
So June 26th, Planning Commission meeting. We're bringing the housing element for recommendation to the Board for final approval, for adoption. So this is the next very, very important step, and so the June 26th, hopefully, everybody can be here for that. The second portion is that we are still looking for a planner. And so hopefully, we're going to have another round of second interviews on Monday. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. That's the everything. Meeting's adjourned.
So the housing element, when are we going to get that draft? Like, on, like, the drafts aren't even on 2020, on the website.
I did, no, I didn't miss it. So what do you say?
Everyone that I've. Yeah.
Thank God, that makes me feel way better.
Everyone, everyone, so don't even, don't even.
Thank you.
That, yeah.
Access.